to be reported.
No, no, Colleen got it.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade.
Here.
Jeff Ferrante, is he here tonight?
Not sure.
Not sure. Okay, all right. Well, he's not speaking, so it's okay. Jennifer Goddard. Here. Brian Haas.
Here.
Is Wayne.
Wayne is not coming.
This open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely as allowed by the Act Governor Baker signed into law on 2021, an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency includes an extension until April 1st, 22 of the remote meeting provisions of his March 12th, 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Law has two major parts. First, law allows public bodies to continue providing live, adequate, and alternative means of public to the deliberations of the public body instead of holding meetings in a public place that is open and physically accessible to the public. Second, the new law authorizes all members of a public body to continue participating in meetings remotely. The open meeting law is requirement that a forum of the body and the chair be physically present at the meeting location remains suspended. All other provisions of the law and regulations such as requirements regarding posting notice of meetings and creating and maintaining accurate meeting minutes remain in effect. Public body minded that notice of all meetings must be posted at least hours in advance, not including weekends and holidays. Notice must clearly specify how the public may access the meeting, whether in person, vote, or both. Okay. This committee is convening via Zoom video conference as posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, be aware that other folks may be and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. Additionally, let the chair know if you are recording or broadcasting this meeting prior to doing so. Please raise your hand at the bottom of the screen. There is a raise hand button if you plan to record or broadcast this meeting, and I look now to see if anyone raises their hand. I do see any raised hands. I am going to assume no one is recording or broadcasting. Should you change your mind in the middle of the meeting, please raise your and let me know. Okay. Open forum. Tonight's meeting is open forum. It is an opportunity for you, the community, to share your concerns with and back to the school committee about potential masking policy. A potential masking policy Superintendent Haas will recommend at our meeting this Thursday night. A final decision and will not be made until then. Tonight is your night to speak to the school and the school committee's night to listen. Of you are welcome and will be considered respectfully. However, bear in mind there will be no discussion or replies to comments. We only have an hour and we want everyone who would like to speak tonight to get a chance to do so. If you require a response, please send off email to the school committee after the meeting. Anyone wishing to address committee may request the current by using the raise your hand function. Once I call on you, Colleen will your microphone. Please provide your name, street of residence in Maynard, and if you are comfortable, this schools your children attend. Each person will have the floor for three minutes. I am going to stay strict on the three minutes because we have so many people in attendance and so many people that want to be heard. The school committee is well aware of the spectrum of strong personal feelings about mask wearing protocols. We have received numerous communications illustrating a variety of perspectives. Tonight's topic is emotionally charged and highly divisive. We expect civility. Verbal attacks or outbursts of any sort not be tolerated. Citizens comments that were emailed to us this week will be to be read will be included in Thursday's meeting. I will not be reading any submissions tonight out loud. That was a miscommunication. I apologize for the confusion created by the agenda and its attachments that are posted for tonight's meeting. We are doing the best we can, people and resources we have. Sometimes mistakes and miscommunications happen, and I just ask that you bear with us. So now do a roll call vote to begin the meeting. Elizabeth Albota.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy. Yes. Okay, the meeting is now open. Superintendent Haas is going to address us briefly and then he will give the floor back to me and we will proceed from there.
Great, thanks very much. Chair Clancy, I will keep it very brief because I really do want to hear what the parents and community had to say, and you really did a nice job setting the context. I just wanted to reiterate that. That as we thought about last year and as the school year ended, we were using masking, we were social distancing, we were outside when possible. We had kids cohorted. We did all those things. We'd already upgraded air purifiers. We've already upgraded mouth filters prior, so we were in a really good position. And I will say that my school ended last year. I think people were really thinking, hey, COVID's over in some sense, and we will not be wearing masks at all. And as summer's gone along, we've gotten a lot of conflicting recommendations from everybody from DPH to CDC, DESI, including our own local boards of health that we meet with constantly. One of the things we didn't do last year that we're looking at this year that we were trying to be part of is testing in schools, of course, with parental permission. And as Chair Clancy mentioned, I too have received communications from parents that are in support of mask wearing for all, that are in support of the DESI recommendations of grade seven and up, and also in support of no masks. So we understand and I agree with what she said, that it's a a very serious issue, and there are people with opinions on all three different angles of should we or shouldn't we be wearing masks? Tonight, really, I want to hear what you have to say. I've gotten a handful of emails. Actually, more than a handful of emails, but tonight's about real healing from you. And then weighing all that information so that on Thursday, we can, I can make a recommendation to the school committee on what's best for our community to open schools, and really, that's the goal. Just in line with Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the goal is open schools full time with everybody in and then doing that safely and effectively. And then I'm going to stop now because I'm interested in what the community has to say. Thank you for the time, Chair Clancy.
Thank you, Superintendent Haas. I am going to ask each of the school committee members if they have a comment and a brief comment, or or you can pass and then we'll go to the community. So I'll start with Mary Branley.
Nope, I'm looking forward to hearing comments.
Okay, Elizabeth Albota.
Same.
All right, Hillary Griffiths.
Um, I want to hear everyone's ideas before I comment.
Okay, and Natasha Rivera.
I would like to actually request that the public comments that were shared before today, because the intention was that they would be read during public comments, get read today. I think that the feedback that people have conveyed may want to be factored into the decision making and by Thursday. If I could finish, if I could finish, please. And I think it does a disservice because I don't feel that the school committee should be changing a protocol regarding public comments without, I understand mistakes happen, but we have a platform that public comments should be allowed to be heard.
Okay, I understand that. But as I explained to you earlier, it is at the chair's discretion to determine the format of a meeting, and if you feel this strongly about it, you can make a motion, we can discuss it, and we can vote on whether or not to include the comments to be read tonight. However, I do want everyone to know who submitted a comment, they have been read, they are being considered. I don't feel it is necessary for us to read every single one tonight and use up the valuable time that people who want to speak directly to us have to do so tonight.
I think it's on the agenda. So to be honest, public comments, so I don't think it needs a motion.
Agenda frequently.
As a point of order, it's on the agenda. It's posted. The agenda wasn't amended. Unless you're actually amending, you're proposing that we amend and we not have public comments. I would not be in support of that. If you were trying to make an a motion that that is happening, I don't know how that could happen when you have people who are going to be speaking. So I think just for the sake of allowing people to be heard who actually put forth effort in writing to us, who are, I think we should allow those comments to also be heard this evening, and I would be strongly opposed to otherwise.
Well, then how about this? If there's time left at the end of the evening, I will read them. Does that work for you?
If they get read tonight is really.
We have, Natasha, we only have, and now we basically have 45 minutes.
Great. So are you going to read them?
If we have time, if everyone is heard and say we're done at 6:15, I mean, 6:45, and there's time left, yes, I will read some of them. I will read what I can. But if there are still people waiting to speak at 7:05, no, I am not.
And we still, they'll still be read on Thursday night.
So if you are going to make this a procedural issue and you would like me to the agenda, I will do that. So I, I as chair am requesting to amend the agenda to have only live citizens' comments, to not read the citizens' comments tonight. Do I have a question or a second?
Can we think in terms of maybe having them at the end of the night if we do have time? Can we amend it that way?
Absolutely.
All right, I make that motion that we read them at the end of the night if everybody in front of us has had an opportunity. Otherwise, they'll be read on Thursday.
Okay, because we have been receiving comments for two weeks or emails for two weeks, and a lot of them arrived prior to us even scheduling tonight's meeting. So that is why I was under the impression or under the understanding that we them Thursday because many of them came to us prior to tonight's meeting even being posted. So do I?
A second.
I will again reiterate, I think it is considering the conversations regarding free speech and issues that have come aboard. I think it honestly is a disservice to our committee, no matter what your intent or interpretation, their intent was to have something be read. And if that requires us to stay for a few minutes later at the end, 10, 15 minutes after, I think that is well worth it considering the subject matter and not to let people's comments have to carry over to Thursday when a protocol has not been discussed such beforehand amongst the committee.
Well, it can't be discussed amongst the committee ahead of time because it wasn't.
Right. To our current protocols is they're, they're met, they're read at the meeting. So that's what I would like us to continue to follow.
I have a couple of questions. One is, how many do we have? And the other one is tonight, if someone wants to speak and they don't get the chance because we run out of time, what happens to that person?
Then they don't get to speak.
But they could put something in writing.
They could, yes.
And in looking, there's a lot of people that didn't put their addresses also, so I'm not sure how many we would actually be reading.
Colleen, I asked them to resend them with their addresses, so a lot of them.
How about if we do a six to seven o'clock? Now it's only 45 minutes for people to speak and then add an extra 15 minutes at the end for, to read the comments. We do that?
Or as many as we can in that time.
We can, but I, yeah, I mean, it's not going to be adequate to read all of them.
Right. Adam, Chair, you have a motion and a second on the floor. So just in terms of procedural pieces, if we want to change that, it will need to be withdrawn and then a new motion made.
Okay, so I withdraw the motion. Yes, Hillary.
Can we get started with all of the verbal comments now and then when we haven't, at the end of that, can we?
We have to, we have to, because because Natasha brought her up as a point of order. We need to resolve this now.
When public comments or whether they're written or verbal, they carry the same weight. I don't feel that we should be treating them differently is, is the other part, too.
Except tonight was meant to be an open session for people directly to us.
Okay, we're going to go in circles about this. It just is what was conveyed to the public. So I know your intent was, is one thing. So are we able to, to Mary's point, can we make a motion?
I just asked for a motion. I just asked, so make it.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we extend the meeting towards the end to allow for written comments to be read if so necessary after verbal comments are, are allowed.
Extended by how much?
Extended by as necessary.
No.
So.
No.
Well, 20 minutes and then to be, if we need to extend it beyond, we can make another motion at that point.
Do I have a second?
Sure, a second, let's go.
Discussion. All right. Vote. Mary Branley.
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota.
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths. Hillary.
Yes.
Natasha.
Yes.
Lydia? No. Okay. Moving on. I am now going to open up the floor to people who would like to be heard. Please raise your hand. I will go through the participants box and look to see if there are any hands raised. Colleen, do you know how, if people have called in, do you know how they can do it on their phone, how they can raise their hand using their keypad?
I will look that up in the document right now.
Thank you. We have one person who has raised their hand. I cannot, I do not see who that person is.
Laurel Maury. Ma Roy, I'm saying.
Okay, great. Um, yes, yeah. Can you please unmute her? Colleen, Laura Maroy. Okay. Laura. You are unmuted.
Yeah, I'll try to do this as fast as I possibly can for the benefit of everybody and the fact that I'm going out shortly. So I have, quickly, I have sent both Brian Haas and Chuck Karaginos my thoughts on masking. They have this, and I'm requesting that this information be read on Thursday night's meeting. That might be the best way to go. I have also attached to that email, there are several sources of research coming out from the CDC in regards to masks and in fact even contradicting some of the information that they have put forward as, as, as in regards to children and masking or teenagers masking. By, by the way, I will digress back. My name is Laurel Maroy. I live at 25 O'More Avenue in Maynard. And I have a freshman in high school. I'd like to make at least three or more points. One, that even with Delta, children are extremely low risk for hospitalizations and death from COVID. Even more so that that there, there's even less of a chance of flu, there's more of a chance of flu related problems than there is with COVID. Two, children are not super spreaders, and there is information in that email that I sent out. Mask mandates do not impact school or community transmission, and in fact, COVID, the, it's an aerosol, it's not even a droplet. So even if we wear masks, the proof is coming out now that the masks do not stop the aerosol from going through the mask. So they're, they're basically workless and not useful. I'd also like to, I went to the DE, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education recommendations. By the way, they are recommendations, they are not set in stone. And I would like to point out that they are, in that letter, they say allow vaccinated students to remain unmasked. And I'd like to draw attention to that for a moment because there is antibody dependent enhancement happening. You can look that up. There's a lot of research and I'm happy to provide that research. But with antibody dependent enhancement, it is showing that there are more people that have been vaccinated now spreading this illness than unmasked, excuse me, than unvaccinated people. And so that just gets thrown right out with the bathwater. And in fact, in May, the CDC changed how they are tracking this, this, you know, virus to the point that if you show up at a hospital or show up, they're, they're not, if you're vaccinated and you come in, they're not testing you. So the statistics are completely not accurate anymore because if you're vaccinated, why test? Okay, or if you don't feel well, why test? So it's, this is so wrong. I'm sure I've got, I think Lydia, you're saying my three minutes are up.
You just, okay, so just can you repeat the antibody dependent, what, again, I just want to write?
Antibody dependent enhancement. And there's a lot of research coming out showing that oh gosh, I'd love to explain this because I've been doing a lot of research around it.
I've got to the next person.
Okay, thank you.
And we have your email and we will look at the sources that you cited.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Colleen? I can't hear you.
You didn't.
You're muted. Still muted. Yes. If anyone is on a phone, they would have to hit the star button and then nine to raise their hand, and then we will unmute them. So it's star nine on a phone. Okay. Do we have, yes, E H. Should be able to unmute now. Yes, E H, go ahead. You are unmuted. Um, hello? Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak? Don't know what happened there. All right, our laser.
Hi there, everybody. Thanks for being here tonight. I've also submitted email comments. I'm happy for them to be read in on Thursday. I am in full support of universal masking. We have unvaccinated children. And I'd also be supportive of eating outdoors if possible, at least during the, during weather that allows for it. We know that unmasked transmission is much higher. As the previous caller pointed out, it is aerosolized. So if we have lots of kids eating together unmasked, it will linger in the air. And so until everybody has an opportunity to be vaccinated at a minimum, I'd love to see those precautions taken. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Tiffany.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Malakowski. I live on Nick Lane. Um, I don't want to get into like research and all those kinds of debate. My concern is that we would use parental opinion rather than CDC and AAP guidance for our children's safe. I would like to follow those recommendations, make sure that masking is mandated in the schools. My children are all under 12. There is literally no other line of defense for them. That is what we have. I would like to see it used. In addition to that, I also want to hear about the quarantine protocols, maybe testing protocols or requirements that would be present in the school, the, you know, cafeteria policies. I'm looking forward to all of that coming hopefully from the next meeting since we are getting so close to the start of school.
Yes, that will all be provided. Actually, we're going to do a document and provide that to the public prior to Thursday's meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, Jamie Delamos.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jamie Wilkinson. I'm at 7 Chandler Street in Maynard. Two children who are both in the middle school, one who is vaccinated and one who is not. I think because of that, because we have mixed vaccination status in this school of mixed ages, then it's really important that we have universal masking until all of our children can be vaccinated. That's really all I have to say. I think that the AAP guidance is very clear right now, but that's the steps that we should take.
Okay. Thank you, Jamie. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, we have Bailey Thaxton.
Hi, everyone. Hopefully you can hear me okay. I live at 11 Prospect in Maynard. I have a child joining the Green Meadow School, first grade. I would like to echo the support for masks in all schools until we are able to vaccinate our children. I'm also really interested in hearing about any possible remote options that might be available for us as families of children, the quarantine protocols, and also what sort of social distancing will continue while our under 12 are under, are unvaccinated. That's information I would be really keen to see before school starts.
Oh, absolutely. And you will have that, that will be released before the end of this week, and we will be discussing it at our regular scheduled meeting on Thursday night.
Thank you. And does the public available to attend that as well? Like, yes.
Yes. Thank you very much. Right, thank you. Evero Schluter.
Hi, Eve Schluter. Can you hear me okay?
Can, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so I too have a child in, going into seventh grade who is vaccinated, and my husband actually teaches in the high school and had taught in the middle school. I'm at 10 Chandler Street. I strongly support masking and other precautions right now because of what some of the other people have said already in terms of several children not being of vaccination age, other families potentially not making the choice to vaccinate, and the fact that we're seeing these breakthrough cases and that vaccinate, even vaccinated individuals can be carriers and transmit the virus. And as for masking in general, I think it is a very benign and simple thing that we can do that will hopefully reduce the rate of potential transmission among our children and frankly, among our, our staff members as well. So I strongly support a mandate for masking for all staff and for students until hopefully things change. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Evero. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, Danielle Meridian. You are unmuted.
Hi there. Sorry, go on.
Yes, you, we can hear you.
John and Danielle Meridian, 21 Roosevelt Street. We have two children in the public schools. They are below the age where vaccines are available to them. We would like to see the masks on the kids. I think it is really the simplest of impositions. Contrary to what you might hear, they do actually reduce the spread of this virus. And until we are able to get all of our children vaccinated, I don't see how this is more than just the slightest imposition.
Thank you very much. Do we have Bernard Cahill. Bernie.
Can you hear me?
You can, Bernie. Thank you.
Thank you, madam.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say a quick thanks to all the members of the school committee for the constant time and effort that you put in unpaid to make the Maynard School system the best that it can be. And the best thing that can be done right now is to keep our children safe from a debilitating and oftentimes deadly virus that has already claimed over 600,000 lives in this country. And other than taking the vaccine, the best way that we know to keep our children from either catching this virus or limiting, limiting, excuse me, its dire effects is to wear a mask. I would strongly encourage the requirement of masks, the minimum for grade six and under, at least until the vaccine is approved for those under 12 years of age. And apologies, I should have started at the top, Gabrielle Circle. And I have a child going into, uh, I should note this, sixth grade and ninth grade. One is vaccinated, one is not. And my concerns, I think were shared by some of the other people who are encouraging mask wearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Erin Caddell.
Um, hi, my name is Erin Caddell. I live on Thompson Street. I have two children at Green Meadow who are unvaccinated. I support full masking in all three schools. With the Delta variant, the risk is higher than it was last school year. And it is no longer the case that children don't get very sick from COVID all across the country. The pediatric ICUs are now filled with children who have COVID. And as someone mentioned previously, masking is our only option right now. We need to do everything we can to keep them safe until vaccines are available to everyone.
Thank you. E H. Let's try this again. Okay, E H, are you there? Technical difficulties. We can't hear you. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna wait on E H. We're gonna go to Marcelo.
Hello, thank you. I'm wondering if you guys can speak to any remote options that would be available.
Um, I will, I will just briefly say that remote options aren't available to us this, this year due to the governor and Commissioner Riley. That is allowance and they have not made provisions for us to include remote options at all here. All right, E H, you still there? Okay.
If this doesn't work, do you think maybe that person can write their comment in the chat to a Colleen? Or somehow get it to Colleen who can, one of us can read it?
Oh, yeah. H, can you write in the chat? We can't hear you.
Or maybe email too.
Yeah. Uh, anyone else? Okay. Um, I'm gonna wait another minute to see if we can either hear from E H. Um.
We have Bailey again.
Yeah, I know. I'm, I'm not calling on people a second time just because I want to give everyone a chance and also because if we are going to read the comments, we need as much time as possible if, if people aren't going to be speaking. Is there anyone else? Colleen, can we try to unmute E H again or E H, can you? Text a message? Maybe.
I'd send a message to E H. So if, if they are able to respond or we can try and troubleshoot.
Okay, Noel.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi, this is actually Noel's mom, Heather, um, Backton Hunt, and I'm at thirty-two Arthur Street in Maynard. And um, I am strongly for all masking for everyone in the school building. I think that, um, you know, our kids are precious and those that cannot be vaccinated at this point need extra protections and it's up to us as a community to protect them as well as for our vulnerable staff and administration. And things that are very concerning to me are, you know, what happens at lunch. So I'm excited to see, you know, what those protocols are going to be. Um, I also support outdoor lunch. Um, that would be great. And I just wanted to share that, you know, my son, who is a rising sixth grader, you know, has expressed anxiety and, and is worried that not enough is going to be done to protect him. And I think that that is something that we really need to take into account. You know, these kids have been through so much over the last year and a half. And I understand that, you know, um, wearing a mask is not comfortable. But I honestly feel like these kids are so resilient and adaptable. And I really, I mean, I don't think that they care at all. I really feel like this is like, you know, more of an adult issue. And um, and so I think that we really need to, as a community, as and as a school system, really step up and show these kids that we have their best interests at heart and are going to do everything that we can to protect them. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sarah Arisman.
Hi, um, my name is Sarah Arisman and I live at fifty-seven Acton Street in Maynard. Um, my call is in, it's not about, yes, it's about the physical health, I understand that. But also about if they were to wear masks to school if that passes, um, what is to be done about anything anxiety producing or mental health wise for children who do have this like anxiety about wearing a mask, you know, the hyperventilation, um, anything of that sort. Where I do have a kiddo going into fourth grade, um, it is a concern just because I've witnessed the behavior that he has around masks in general. He didn't seem to care at first, but then some sort of anxiety did develop over the summer and it developed, you know, I really saw it yesterday. And so I'm wondering if, what is going to happen for them, for the kids who do have this anxiety piece about wearing the mask. What sort of help will they get in, you know, going back to school? Will their needs be met? Cause I know some kids, they just can't handle it. It's like a freak out situation and I think their mental health should also be considered as, along with the physical.
Yes, and, and we are, we are doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Craig Force.
All right, how do I sound?
You sound awesome. Thank you.
Oh, well, that's, that's nice. Technology does work sometimes. I would like to say that I, I really appreciate the first caller's information. And I would like to understand more of that. I live on twenty-two Deer Path, by the way. And I have a fourth grader and a sixth grader. And I, I feel like a moderate approach is maybe warranted in that this is psychological and emotional as, as the last speaker just mentioned. And there is some kind of, even for myself, of emotional comfort in wearing a mask. And so I do feel as well that it, it is a very slight in, uh, you know, in this position. And recognizing that there may be potential backlash, medical, uh, you know, flare ups to this. That's where I suggest moderation where we've had recommendations of the kids going out for lunch. I think that's great. When there are opportunities to unmask and, and get some air, this drives us outside into nature. These are all great things. So as the information starts coming in about, you know, what deleterious effects might the mask cause, then we can track that information too. So I'm, I'm saying that I'm for the masks and I'm also for understanding much better the first speaker's information and diving into that deeper. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak? Colleen?
I do have one comment in the chat when you wanted me to read it.
Do you want to read it?
Sure. It's, um, I'm not
Is it from E H?
No, actu-
Nope, you're muted.
His wife actually spoke. Um. I'm not sure who this is from. It just says, it's hard to see in the chat. If masking to be a general option amongst teachers and students, that would be ideal. It's hard on children under the age of six with those with disabilities. I see this every day at work, healthcare administrator, mother of two, nine and five year old.
Okay. All right, all right. Now we have a bunch. Um. Olga Dravov.
Good evening. Um, I am actually not a resident of Maynard. I am a teacher at the high school level. And I just wanted to share my two cents, if that's okay. Last year it was very hard to read the room once your children were online. Or you don't see the body language, you don't see their disposition and kind of it's hard to adjust to teaching when you do not see kids. It, it became infinitely better when we started the hybrids, uh, mode and we at least could see their body language of at least half of them. And then more in April when we started seeing more of them in classes. So, um, I certainly want to make sure that this, my workplace is safe for me, for my colleagues and for my students. However, at the high school level, I would ask, um, that perhaps options such as face shields might be looked at because I do think there is a lot of value at, um, of, there's a lot of value in being able to see the facial expressions. You know, a little encouraging smile and there is a lot of that. What makes school is social, emotional learning and whatnot. So the high school where the vaccination rate is perhaps uh, higher than in other buildings, if a face shield is an appropriate option, um, I think it would be, uh, very beneficial. But again, I'm not a scientist. I do not know if face shield is just the safe or comfortable, you know, for vaccinated people in regards to stopping the transmission or, you know, that sorts. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie. Is this? Is this a different Julie? I don't know if this Julie or not.
Hi, can you hear me? Yes, oh, hi. It's Julie Katroni. I just wanted to reiterate what was in my email to you guys as well. Um, I wanted you guys to take in consideration of children with special needs, especially those with language barriers. I can tell you that these children comprehend information and learn to do the same gestures by physically watching someone's lip and mouth movement. And with a mask on, learning is extremely difficult to communicate with their peers, their teachers and anybody around them. I know summer school this year in Maynard and across Massachusetts, masks were optional. And all parents should have to choose what best fits their family's needs and their kids' needs. I also want to bring up that everyday things like sports throughout the summer masks were not mandated both inside and outside. And my oldest son, who's in high school, played on one of these teams inside a facility and throughout the 12 teams, not one child got COVID for the eight weeks that they played. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Do we have, all right, Alana.
Hello?
Alana?
Yes, actually, this is Teddy. Um, I sort of agree with Olga. I'm sorry, I live at Twenty Michael Road. My kids as well, uh, for the last eight weeks have played AAU, uh, three different teams, all indoors, no issues. Uh, they're both in the high school, both vaccinated. Uh, we've done everything we're supposed to do. Just speaking for the high school, I don't want to get into debate about the vaccination, the, the age of the vaccinations. But just speaking of that, I have two in high school, both vaccinated. Um, and I think it should literally be the parent's discretion. Thank you.
Thank you. If there is anyone else who wishes to speak, please raise your hand. Jess Crufting.
Hi, is this reception terrible? I am driving home from work.
No, we can hear you.
Okay, um, Jess Crufting, Juan Roosevelt. Um, I kind of jumped on right off work. I'm leaving, um, my healthcare job, but I was just hearing what people were saying. I felt like I had to call in, so I'm not really totally prepared. But I just wanted to put in our family. I sent in a, a letter to our family's request for a mask mandate because, uh, every epidemiologist, every scientist, uh, that I've been reading, that I've talked to, every doctor, it's literally been shown to be the, the most effective way to keep our kids safe, to keep our teachers safe and other staff. And it's, you know, kind of the old Swiss cheese layer effect, like if some people aren't vaccinated or can't be, um, you know, this is just another means of protection to help everybody and Delta is a different beast. Um, and we're not going to be outside like other people's playing, you know, their families playing sports all summer. We're not going to be outside all summer. We have to think about the whole year when we're inside, when we can't get out because it's, you know, ten degrees outside and all that. So I, I think, I, I don't know, I think my comment may be read on Thursday, but, uh, like this is the, the most, the safest way. And I know there's probably a lot to, to think about with, um, you know, our special needs kids and everything, but I'm hoping we can make it safe for them too, because we don't want to have to send everybody home and go quarantine for two weeks at a time.
Correct. Okay, thank you. All right, we have Colleen.
Oh, I'm unmuted. No. I have Dee Hart who texted me. They're having trouble, uh, raising their hand, but they had something to say.
Okay, but, um, uh, let's see.
And I also have a comment in the chat.
Do you see them in the?
I do see them in the list.
Okay, can you, can you unmute them?
Just unmuted, asked to unmute.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
This is, uh, Dee Hart. I live on twenty-seven Lincoln. I am fully in support of the kids being masked. I know it sucks. My daughter had to have speech therapy last year and it was very difficult through the screen and when she went to private stuff that she had to keep her mask on. That said, this is not just a personal responsibility of everyone deciding what they're doing for their family. It's everyone. Your choice affects everyone. And that's really important to think about. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Right.
Did have one comment in the chat. I didn't know if you wanted me to read that.
Uh, I think we should probably only read it if we can identify the person. I mean, technically.
I do have a name and an address.
All right.
Laura Bibbo, forty old Mill Road, Maynard. We have a daughter going into fifth grade at Fowler with viral asthma. We have concerns due to her underlying illness. But that being said, I think that this illness is so under unpredictable. And everyone, sorry, this is hard to read in the chat. And unpredictable and everyone is at risk for serious long-term effects. I would like to be, I would like it to be required that all people wear masks in the school building. I also like the idea of the outdoor lunches whenever possible and social distancing when lunches are not outside.
Okay, thank you. We have a little less than 10 minutes. I am going to shut off comments at seven PM. So if you have any inclination to speak, please raise your hand. I am going to shut off comments at 7:00 PM. If you have any inclination to speak, please raise your hand. All right, I'm going to give it about 30 more seconds and then I'm going to call it. Okay. So. Moving on to the written comments. Colleen, are they all in one place?
Yes, I put them all in that one document.
In that one document? Okay. I do not have access to that document at this time. Natasha, do you want to read the comments?
Hold on, let me get a pair. Sorry. Okay. And Colleen, these were updated for today's also that came in?
Yes, anything, if there was no address, it's noted at the bottom. And I just checked, we have nothing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, first comment, this is, the address is. For Scott in Minshurdat at 30 Old Marble Road. We are the parents of Kiana Shurdat. We live at 30 Marble Road in Maynard. Kiana will be entering first grade this year at Green Meadow. We are asking the school board to require mandatory masking inside the classroom. We are joined in this call to action by every medical scientific organization, including the Center for Disease Control and Prevention and the Academy. American Academy of Pediatrics. Masking is the most important thing we can do to protect our teachers, staff, students and families when children return to in-person learning. It is an evidence-based, low-risk intervention that allows us to prioritize in-person instruction for our children. Most COVID-19 infections in Massachusetts are from the Delta variant, which is much more transmissible than the initial variant. While vaccines are effective, breakthrough infections occur and those people might transmit the virus to others. It will be many months at best until a vaccine is available for children ages five to 11. Children account for almost a quarter of the COVID-19 infections and up to 10% of them develop symptoms of long virus. Long virus cases, including fatigue, headache, abdominal pain and lack of concentration. Even a mild COVID-19 disease in children would lead to further school disruptions, enclosures during recommended. Isolation. To make masking optional would be, would be to ignore the advice of every scientific medical organization in the country. It would be reckless and would add to the burden of illnesses and possible deaths from this brutal disease. We have seen firsthand the ravages of COVID-19 as Kiana's grandmother was stricken during the first wave of COVID back in early 2020. Let's do the right thing and require mandatory masking for all public school students and staff. We have all sacrificed so much to this point in time. Let's not allow COVID fatigue and complacency to lower our defenses when we are so close to the finish line. That being vaccinations available for our littlest ones. Thank you. Next one is from Catherine Johanna at One Fletcher Street. Hello, I have three kids in Maynard schools, or I should say had, as I recently withdrew them to a lack of assurance that MPS. Would keep my high-risk child safe and healthy at school. School is meant to be a safe place for every child. But due to political rhetoric, misinformation and apathy towards the ongoing pandemic. It is yet unclear that schools will be safe for my, for any child, much less a high-risk one. A year ago, the school committee chose to begin the year in a full remote model. At that time, Massachusetts had a seven-day average of 300 cases per day, less than 200 people in the hospital. And approximately 20 new admissions per day. This year, we have over 1,000 cases per day, nearly 400 people in the hospital and 60 new admissions per day. And we are dealing with a far more infectious variant. Last week, Massachusetts admitted 10 children to the hospital, several of whom needed ICU-level care. Things are demonstrably, sorry, worse, yet all mitigations have been removed and remote school isn't an option. The science is clear, with proper mitigations in place, in-person education can be done safely. Universal masking is the bare minimum and lowest effort mitigation that can be, that can be put in place. And in the absence of a state mandate, the school committee must take the responsibility for protecting our students with a mask mandate, regardless of vaccination status. Additional protocols such as distance at snack, lunch, arrivals and dismissal, contact tracing and quarantining. And enrolling in the state's hold testing program will further reduce transmission in our schools. Maynard has an obligation to provide a safe and healthy school environment that will protect every student. COVID protocols don't hurt anyone, but the lack of protocols exclude children like mine from school. Children for whom Maynard still has a legal and financial obligation to educate. I'm asking the school committee to step up and prove that Maynard cares about all of its children. By putting robust COVID protocols in place for the upcoming school year. Thank you. Okay. So there was, Colleen, there was one, it looks in here, says no address. Paul Fine, do we get something in address later?
I actually didn't, just going through now and you did say you resent it, but nothing was ever received.
Okay, I'm going to just skip that for a moment. If Paul, if you're out there, want to send an address, Paul Fine, please. Please do so. We can, we'll include that with your comment and read it later. Okay, next one is from Bryn Hart at 27 Lincoln Street. Hello, I'm writing to express my concern about the idea of masks not being mandated in our schools in the coming school year. The Delta variant is surging and I am not comfortable sending my child into the, any environment. That will greatly increase her chances of either contracting this terrible disease or at least picking up the virus to spread it. To spread to immunocompromised people in our life. This isn't just about a single person, but the health of our entire family and the entire community by extension. Thank you, Bryn Hart. Okay. It looks like, again, there is a couple, don't have addresses, Riven Hart. I don't know, is it the same? No. If you're out there, please send your address so we can read your public comment.
Who is that again Natasha? I'm making note of whoever we can't read.
Oh, Riven Hart.
Riven.
R-I-V-E-N.
Is it H-A-T?
Yeah, it could have been someone who spoke also. So I know we had a heart speak. I don't know if it's the same.
If I might, that person seems to have just raised their hand.
Oh, there, alrighty then. Can we unmute Riven? Riven, are you there?
Yes, I am. I did send a second one with my, my address in it. So if you get to that one, it will have my comment in it.
Okay, all right. Is the comment changed? I can just read it from the original?
It's verbatim.
Okay, okay. Riven, do you want to just say what your address is and I can?
Fowler Street.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you very much. We empathize with the frustration that a global pandemic has caused. I wear a mask for 10 to 12 hours at a time outside on 100-degree days. They're uncomfortable, sweaty and have left acne scars I will be living with for years. These consequences are still infinite better than the long-term effects of a COVID infection. Which I have watched wreak havoc on the healthcare of my, on the health of my brother, sister-in-law and kids. As well as incapacitate a close dear friend of, a close dear friend for the last year. Just regarding CDC mask guidelines in a time of Delta resurgence. Puts our children and amazing staff at astronomical and unnecessary risks. Please continue to follow the medical advice of the agency created for this very reason. Thank you, Riven. And I want to say there may have been. A couple more.
I feel like there were.
Yeah, Jessica Teague, I have them start here. Are you, they're not on the document, but are you okay if I read them, then the email? Or do you want to read them?
I can't, I don't, I.
Oh, okay.
I wasn't planning, I didn't set it up so that I could.
No worries. I can read them from the email directly then. Okay, Jessica Teague at Two Whitney Ave. I am writing as a scientist and a mother to implore the Maynard Public Schools to implement universal masking and other COVID-19 mitigation strategies. For the upcoming school year. Both the CDC one and the American Academy of Pediatrics two have recently recommended universal masking in schools. Regardless of vaccination status. The Delta variant of COVID-19 that is becoming dominant worldwide is much more infectious than the original SARS-CoV-2 strain. Which approximately, with approximately 1,000 times higher viral loads in infected individuals. Individuals. Three, and the transmission rates. Higher than the common cold or flu and similar to chickenpox. Four. I think I remember those. Sorry, I apologize, my emphasis got a little wonky there. Children and adults carry similar amounts of virus when they are infected. Five, indicating that children can transmit the virus as well as adults. Outbreaks at summer camps and children's athletic facilities where masking and other mitigation strategies were not mandated. Have shown just how quickly the Delta variant can spread. Six, seven. Modeling of infection rates in the Delta variant shows that up to 70% of children who are not already immune. Can be infected in schools in the absence of mask-wearing. And 40% could still become infected with mask-wearing, but the absence of other mitigation strategies such as health screenings and testing. Eight, while generally, while generally children experience milder symptoms and most do not require hospitalization. Our recent studies show that more than half of the children infected with COVID have at least one symptom that lasts more than four months. With 43% experiencing impairment from these symptoms in daily life. Nine, while vaccination of all those who are eligible should be prioritized. Universal masking is still essential to protection of our school community. In the July outbreak in Provincetown, 74% of infections and 80% of hospitalizations were breakthrough infections of fully vaccinated individuals. And the viral loads of vaccinated and unvaccinated infected individuals were similar. Ten, with, oh, she's citing, so these are news articles. So Colleen, this can be included with the minutes, I'm sorry. With many, we may all be done with COVID, but it is not done with us. Please prioritize the health and safety of our children, staff, families and greater community. And just to clarify, all those numbers I was calling out are articles that she cited. Within her public comments from the CDC and various outlets.
Yes. I did add those to the comment document. They were actually in Thursday night's document.
Okay. Okay. Hold on, let's see. Okay, so Jess Crufting, I know she.
Yeah.
Spoke. I think. I can go ahead and read her public comment.
I have it up too, if you want to, we can take turns.
Up to you, up to you Madam Chair.
Go ahead if you've got it pulled up.
Okay. Jess Crufting, I just lost her address, sorry. What was her address that she? I'm sorry?
Roosevelt Street.
Oh, thank you. I knew I read that somewhere. I just couldn't find it on this email. Okay. We are Jess and Jess, healthcare worker and Nick. Crufting, physics teacher, parents of Green Meadow student. We are writing to voice our support for implementing universal masking at all Maynard schools. All variable evidence indicates that SARS-CoV-2 will spread in schools without mitigation efforts, including universal masking. The CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics agree. Both agencies have released guidance that schools should mandate masking for students, staff and visitors. As of 8/5, the CDC recommends universal indoor masking for all students, staff and visitors for K through 12, regardless of vaccination status. We implore you to listen. Though infections in Massachusetts declined earlier this year as vaccination rates increased, the Delta variant poses a serious threat. Delta is much more transmissible than previous variants and data from Middlesex County reflect that reality. Cases here increased roughly tenfold over the past six weeks alone. The science on kids and COVID is clear. Children can be infected with the SARS-CoV-2 and can get sick and die of COVID-19. And can spread the virus. While children are less likely than adults to experience severe illness or death. Long-term consequences of COVID-19 on neurological, lung, metabolic and cardiovascular function remain unknown. Recent studies estimate that anywhere from 10 to 14% of kids less than 12. Who are infected experience long haul, long haul symptoms lasting for more than five weeks after diagnosis. Over the past 18 months, we have learned how to reduce transmission infection. Masks are crucial scientifically proven mitigation strategy. Evidence from the CDC shows that relatively low levels of infection of kids during the 2020, 2021 school year. Were in large part the result of school closures and widespread mitigation efforts in schools regarding mask mandates. Wearing mask is a small sacrifice while helping ensure that our kids can remain safe while going to school. Which we know is important for their intellectual, social and emotional development. We want to remind you that this isn't alarmist to do as much as we can to protect our town and our children. That should be required, especially for the most vulnerable unvaccinated. Thanks. Lydia, did you, I think. Kaylee Hart was.
Yeah, I'm looking for.
I don't, I didn't see an address on that. So if Kaylee Hart is out there, that's, and I think Paul was the only other. Paul Fine, I think those are the only two I may have not read because there was addresses that were missing. So I don't know if you're, if they want to send them, maybe those will be read for Thursday.
Did you read Julie Blazars?
Oh wait, hold on.
On.
Nope, I don't think I did actually. Sorry. Do you want to go ahead and, do you have it up?
I don't, I'm just.
Okay.
From tonight.
All right. I don't know if. Hers was for public comment. I know she spoke though. Here we go. I don't think her indication was that it was for public comment.
Oh, she, yeah, she said, she said you can read my email on Thursday. So I guess wait until Thursday. Laura Maroy also sent one that she wanted right on Thursday. So we can wait, I guess, to read those.
Okay. I think that's all that I had aside from the two that hadn't put addresses. Colleen, am I missing anything that you see?
Actually, many of the ones you mentioned were not sent to the comment email. So just forward those onto that email if you've read them.
Yeah.
You don't see them.
Okay, all right. We can do that offline after the meeting. Okay. I think. That is all we have. Thank you everyone for being here and for providing us with a lot of stuff to think about and consider. Before I accept a motion to adjourn. I would like to apologize to Natasha for losing my temper with her earlier this evening. It's been a really difficult few couple of weeks and I was not prepared for. For that discussion. So I have no excuse and I'm very sorry.
Not necessary. Love you Lydia, you're good.
No, it is, it is necessary. So anyway, all right, now that we're all lovey touchy, good. Let's, do we have motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right then, Elizabeth Albota.
Yes.
Family is muted. She wants to stay.
That was her objection.
That was mine saying yay.
Hillary Griffiths. Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes, all right.
Brian, thank you also.
Thank you all.
Thank you everybody for your comments.
Yeah, thank you.
Natasha will be at the. Right, or the board of health meeting or something.
Yeah, the board of health meetings tomorrow night. I'll plan on going there. Yep, okay.
Great, thank you.